We're in coffee.
Keep us on.
Mr. Major, emergency. This thing we just talked about. Bicycle. Did you do that? A quick read.
And I did look up 4511 and it has everything that we would need for ordinances or statutes for regulation of bicycles.
That's Ohio code?
Yes. So that part, again, you lose the money, but we don't probably do that much anyway. So that part's fine.
It's gonna happen, right?
Now, Mr. Major, emergency ordinance for Aqua Ohio water rates.
Okay, Linda.
Yes.
Do you have the, you have the program, right?
The ordinance? Yeah, he gave me one, but I thought he passed them out to everybody.
No, I didn't get them.
Oh. I thought he passed them out to everybody.
I never saw it.
I gave you the original.
Did you see this?
No.
He handed me something that night.
Maybe because we said hand it to you, because for finance?
I thought I got one.
What is that? What did it have?
Was that, was that presentation he had?
Okay, well, this is the actual ordinance. So what else is ever judged? You're gonna present it, right?
Yeah.
There's the ordinance.
Is it okay to pass that as emergency? How did we do it last?
I couldn't remember.
What's the title of that study?
Here's the situation.
Did he tag it where?
See, everybody else, I checked on this. All the townships passed it. Lower will pass it, and Strouders is gonna pass it next week.
Are they going to emergency?
Well, we passed it.
Next week doesn't say emergency.
Well, it doesn't say it, but we could type it in if we need to. First, we need to determine, do we need to?
Yeah.
I mean, those rates don't go into effect until 2015, is that correct?
Yeah, right.
So would there be a reason that we can't do three readings?
Well, here's the deal. What Aqua would like to do is start planning engineering work and stuff like that for next year. And they can't do it if they don't have the right to use this money in their budget. Now, if we don't do it, remember, we held it up one year. And from that, we got the grant for YSU for the engineer, civil engineering department, remember? And we're still using that. And they told me if they need another grant, they'll do it. But remember, the fellow who lived across the street here, the professor who was head of this program, he moved, you know, he's not here anymore. So the head of the department down there told me, when they hire somebody, they'll let me know and we'll pick it up again. But Aqua started all this. Remember when we had the problem with flooding and all that? Yeah. The president came from Butler, Pennsylvania, and we had a big discussion. Okay, so if we don't pass this, then it's gotta go to the rate commission in Columbus. And that costs money, lawyers and all that stuff. And eventually, it'll come back to the taxpayers and like that.
Okay, but is there a deadline for that?
Well, not a deadline, but the first of the year is when it should go into effect.
So if we did three readings on it, they would still have plenty of time?
Well, no.
I guess. But they were three reads that take us into July.
Yeah, but if you go through three readings now, but if it needs to go to emergency in June, then we could just do it. Yeah. I mean, if he says, oh, I need it by June 15, then we could go.
Well, he told me, I told him, I had a talk with him about this. He said, if they got it and everybody agrees, then they can go ahead and plan their engineering and project, major projects for next year.
Well, then I'm surprised they don't have it as an emergency back.
It's up to us. It's not up to him. It's up to us.
Right, right, but he supplies us with the ordinance.
Yeah, he supplied the ordinance.
But they do, they understand that council seems to be in favor of this.
Yeah. I have no problem.
Right, it doesn't look like there's an objection to it. So if we follow the routine of three readings, you know, we're not a, we're not a body that needs only once a month. We need every two weeks, so, you know, if we follow the open readings.
Okay, you'd like to do it like that.
If they know it's in the pipeline, they'll know it's gonna go through.
Right.
Thank you.
Does it anything in the minutes that you wanted it done in emergency?
If they want, my opinion, if they wanted it done in emergency, they would've wrote it down.
Right.
They maybe saw that thing that said, not everything's an emergency.
Okay. So you're saying present it next time for the first three readings?
No, it's on there now. I think we do it tonight.
First reading tonight.
I can't ever recall one of these having an emergency on it.
No.
They give them to us, they never have an emergency on it. And I think, you know, we've done a much better thing in the recent, you know, to try to get three readings in so that our town people can come in and they can actually ask questions or speak on it or whatever.
But since this is kind of a minor ordinance, I would like to, the reason I wanna get rid of it is because we wanna pass our 3.2 mill, and I wanna clear the deck for that, you know? Follow me? Because you got that on tonight.
Why would this impact? We're gonna do three readings on the taxes.
People don't like, people don't like.
Three readings, because the purpose of doing the three readings is so that people can come in and they can comment or they can ask questions. And probably the same thing with this, surprise, Joe, because this is gonna be a rate increase for them.
Yeah.
You know, it seems pretty much like everyone, all of our neighboring entities have all passed it and they're gonna support it.
Yeah, the township has to.
And we feel that it should be supported, but maybe they wanna speak on it.
Joe, if we start it tonight, it'll be adopted on June 17. That's in one month.
Oh, June 17.
Because tonight will be the first reading.
Okay, let's do that then.
Okay.
Okay, fine, good.
All right, Linda, first reading of a resolution for 3.2 tax rule renewal.
Yes, and that's exactly what it is. It's gonna expire at the end of this year. This is the major source of income to our town. We are going renewal and not replacement, so there will not be a tax increase. And there also will not be an incurred extra cost to the taxpayer because it's a renewal in regards to the homestead, what was changed by the state last year, where there will no longer be that reduction of taxes, real estate taxes, for 12 and a half percent that everybody expects to get, which if you pass something new or if you pass a replacement, you will no longer get that on those new levels. This one you will, because it's a renewal.
First reading of the legislation for $5 additional permissive tax.
And this is something that we have not had, and it is a new $5. The purpose of it, and I think that's the most important part, and Anthony called our attention to this, is that this is allowed per 4504-172, including improving and maintaining public roads. And that is what this money is going to be used for, because as we all know, the roads are a mess, and we do not have a lot of funding in order to fix these roads. Not that this is a huge amount of money, but it will be somewhat of a help. It will go directly to the street fund. It cannot go to the general fund, so it is restricted in its use, and it will be a help to the village.
So Linda, when I go to get a license, let's say, if it says Poland Village, they know that there's another $5 on there.
They will. Now, as far as the timing of it, this has to be submitted, we'll do three readings. It has to be submitted by July the 1st. It's to take effect in '15, but depending on how your license is, you know, over.
Oh, yeah.
How soon they, great. The money's gonna roll in differently, and they can't really even give me a number, because we had that discussion, because they have no way of knowing just yet how it's going to come in and how soon they'll start to see the return on it. We'll definitely start getting something next year, but maybe possibly a little sooner.
Good. This is the Linda Cernick Show tonight. Third reading of an ordinance for record retention schedule.
That's exactly what it is, too. And it'll be done. Records retention, we're mandated to have this in place, and that's what we're gonna do.
Last but not least, motion for renewal with Selective and Scottsdale Insurance Companies.
We are going with the renewal with these same two companies, because they actually were the best. And it's slightly lower than last year's, which is good, as long as it's not higher. And we are still doing the, the law enforcement will be with Scottsdale, and everything else will be with Selective. It was interesting, because Mrs. Geis reminded me that there was a time, which I actually remember, when our law enforcement policy alone was the cost of all of our insurance right now. And we had some claims, we had some problems, liability, problems, litigation going on. So this new premium is $20,195. But that was pretty sobering, so I do remember that time.
Anyone else have anything? I didn't see a caucus. No, I, that looked okay, that bicycle, Joe?
It did. And like I said, anything you need as far as an ordinance or statute, it's in 4511. If you see that the officers are citing people, you know, a normal amount of time, and they're losing any revenue, you can always come up with an ordinance that mirrors the Ohio statute. I don't think we're gonna end up meeting to do that, based upon what Russ was saying, but it's there if you need it. That certainly will cover whatever any officer might come across in the village as far as a bicycle law does, and I think we're perfectly covered. And the old ordinance is very outdated, and it isn't consistent with the Ohio laws, and we definitely should repeal that. That much is a certainty. The only thing that I said the council could consider was whether I'd be wanting to adopt another ordinance. And I don't think we can do that right now. It looks fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm gonna try something tonight, if it's okay with everybody. I have the ordinance, and the ordinance is an order, so if we could adopt the repeal of 444 as number one, and if we can do, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I take that back. If we could do the, did you say, Linda, did you say that the, the permissive taxes are three readings?
Three readings.
Okay, so we wanna do, we wanna do 444 repeal as one, and we wanna do, the permissive tax will be the first reading, that'll be the second one.
What happened to Aqua one, aren't you?
That's the next one.
Oh, you're not gonna follow.
No, I didn't, because I just did it the way you guys presented that one. I could change the numbers any way you wanna do it.
Okay, no, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so three is Aqua one?
Three is Aqua one, four is the third reading for record retention.
What about the first reading?
For the renewal.
For 3.2 tax.
Should I have that?
Sure, it's the first reading. It's right, the longer one.
It's attached to. Yeah, that's it.
Then I got you. You want the first one?
444 is the first one. The permissive tax is citing just this. Aqua's third, so far.
That's also a first reading. Is that what you want to use for? I just wanna have it in order, so I don't, yeah, we'll make that one four, and we'll make the third reading five.
Okay, tell us when you want us to call.
I can just read them, and then you can.
Use our record.
All right, if that's okay, everybody. I just wanna see if it works easier. Instead of shuffling papers, it's the answer.
I think you make your job easier. That's all about you.
Yep.
So you want something like the per, or?
I can't do it now, you have to do it later.
Tell me if you want it on the record, you want that.
I can make it on the record.
Tell us about.
The 42nd Annual Parade will be Monday. The ceremony will start at 9:00 a.m. with the service for the Four Chaplains. If you haven't seen that or been to that, there's a brief little bio on the front of this flyer. It's pretty interesting how we do it. Our parade grand marshal is Howard Friend, who served with Patton. Our speaker of the day is Jack Betts, and our chaplain is Pastor Barry Robb from the Margaret Wood Memorial Baptist on 616. They will actually place a wreath in front of the Four Chaplains monument. When that's over, we'll continue our parade lineup at 10 o'clock. We'll step off from the American Legion post, and we'll come down College Street. We'll turn right on Riverside. We'll stop on the Main Street Bridge for a brief ceremony for those lost at sea. Continue on left on the Riverside and into Riverside Cemetery, where we will have our full services. We'll be doing something that we started in 2011 again, honoring all of the Poland men that were killed in, killed in action from World War, I believe it's I, II, Korea, and Vietnam. We haven't had any sense of Vietnam, but hopefully we won't have to add any more names to that. So if you're coming, you're more than welcome to walk. I don't think we've ever actually said that before, but it came up last meeting. The big thing that we do is there's no commercial advertising, so you can't put Daffodil for Judge on your car when you're driving. You can't throw candy. And we strongly urge people not to pass anything out along the parade route. We don't care if it's dollar coupons for Chick-fil-A or American flags, because we feel that when you do that, you're directing attention to yourself, and we want the direction to be, we want the attention to be directed towards the reason we're here. So, you know, I can't stop it, but we can continually ask, and when people see it happen, they'll say, man, I shouldn't have been doing that, or that girl shouldn't have been doing that. So we're expecting nice weather. Eighty-one, I think it said, was gonna be the hype of that day. We haven't been inside since the '90s.
If, sorry, get through that one.
If we have that weather, we will move to the gym at the middle school, and it'll be a much shorter ceremony, because band members will drop like flies in there, it's so hot. We'll cut a lot of stuff out and go from there.
And also, before, at 8:00, at the main station at the firehouse, there's breakfast. If anyone would like to join, at 8:00.
Pancake breakfast?
Yeah.
That's where the fire station is?
At the main fire station, at 8:00 in the morning.
Do the baseball people know not to throw stuff out?
Mr. Bush called me this morning, and he said, hey, I just got the letter that was due last Friday. Are we still allowed to participate? I said, yes, you're always welcome to participate. Tell your kids not to throw candy, because if they do, the marshals will stop them and make them get out of the parade.
Oh, don't do that, though.
I said, yes, they will. So.
I made that mistake my first year as president of Poland baseball. Never made it again. And I look out for those that come after me, and no one else.
So he was, he was told, it's in the letter that they get, it's always been in the letter that they get. You know, I guess, I don't know if I'm old school or, but that's the way my dad always did it. And here's what, here's what he used to say. He used to say, before, when he was involved, that the politicians always got to be first, and they got to make all the speeches, and the veterans were at the back, and they were acting up. And so when he did it, he decided, we're gonna change that, we're gonna put the veterans up front, because those are the guys that we're here for, and the politicians, we don't really care if they come up. That's what he said. So that's why the speeches by all the politicians are cut in the cemetery, because we're not there to hear the politicians speak. We're here to say, this is Mayor Sycamore Hughes, here's the village officials. Hi, I'm Chairman Agar, here's the township officials. And Jim Laverne, here's the school board, bingo. And that's just more of a courtesy for our out-of-town guests, so they know, you know, who's there, and it's a way for us to thank you guys for all of our work you do, too. But as far as the speeches in the cemetery, you know, we'll go through the program, we'll get to Jack's speech, and we'll be done.
Joe?
Any questions?
Yeah. Okay. You also have any caucus items? I passed out this stuff, I know Russ has been talking to me and some of you guys about accepting alternate sources of payments in the violation of the bill. I mean, his thought process is to keep the money in the village if we can. This is information about credit cards. I got, see, the first sheet, two sheets is from NPC, who I sort of use myself, and then the other one's from Key Bank. Now, Key Bank did not give any ironclad rates yet, but I did talk to the guy today, very similar to, similar to the other one. There's no monthly charge, there's no contract, there is a $7 a month fee for their equipment, I believe. And there's two, right now, there's two options you can go, right on the computer, or they have like the little terminal that you go to the restaurants and use those. Next-day funding, both of them have the same, the money put in that day will be in our account the next day. As far as Key Bank's concerned, they own Ellevon, I think it is the third largest company in the nation, and NBC is fifth third bank to day running. So I guess, pretty much do the same thing, it's gonna come down to us as far as what's gonna cost us, probably from our standpoint and to our customers. Now, on the NPC, on the top of the second page, says they use a .10 BPS, whatever that means, plus .8 cents per transaction, and they also, it equates to 15, .15% to 1.8% on the color and the value. Top two is Ryan Hallen. I know him, and he says they do the city of Chicago, so they have experience doing this, but sure Key Bank does also. And the other thing will be with the checks, and Russ's opinion, he thinks we should take checks. If they were to bounce, then they'll have to deal with their own banks, as far as that's concerned, but.
Is there a machine that you can run a check when you get it, and it'll verify with the bank?
I think so, like Lenarders has it, Morris has it, I'll be.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna cost us a lot of money either, but it's, steer somewhere away from, you know, going somewhere else, if they don't have to get a money order, they have to go to banks to get cash, everyone has a credit card. Exactly. So I'll get some more information. If you guys know anyone that does this also, feel free to bring it forward. And I think we should figure out what we're gonna do in the move, which is pretty soon to be.
Our group, the Ohio Association of People Transfertations, we just started, we use PayPal, our online stuff.
Okay.
And we use the Square in a phone. Somebody comes to the phone, swipes it, it goes right into our account. They take a couple bucks as a handling fee, and that's it.
Very similar.
Yeah.
Two should finance. Look at this.
No, we actually commented on it to Mayor before, and I think it's long ago to do. The rule's kind of prehistoric in the way that we do some of these things, and.
We're losing revenue.
Right, right. So, I mean, I say bravo to everybody, who's making an attempt to try to bring in as much revenue as we possibly can, make changes, do whatever we need to do. It's positive in that respect.
I'll give the solid numbers from Key Bank, and like I said, if anyone else has anything, maybe find a, a little enhancement, figure out what they wanna do. Something that's easy for politics, she's not, you know, I don't wanna make it too hard. Anyone else have anything else? Anthony?
No, Nick and I talked about collecting on the tree that was removed, and he showed me a township ordinance that was sent down. We're trying to fashion one for the village to send down, so we can make sure we attach the tax bill of the votes, who's true we had to cut down. Nick called the auditor today, hadn't heard back yet. And then if he needs something from me, I said I'd be happy to write it. They may need a resolution from council, I can help craft that as well. But I do wanna make sure we do that within the next couple weeks before, make the home get sold, then we lose our right to collect that. Let's do it all, Nick.
So we need a resolution at the next meeting for that?
We might. You know, I looked at our ordinance, and it just says that once they don't pay within 30 days after that, then we can collect the money. It doesn't say how, it just says we can. And I think if we certify to the auditor that we did send out a notice, if we had five days, we done, you know, had it collected, or had it done, sent a bill, they had 30 days, they didn't pay. Once that timeframe is run, and we can document that, then I think we can ask them to attach it. I think they just need the resolution from the council, that this is the actions we took on these dates, therefore, please, clients, do an owing and attach it to their tax bill. So whatever they need, we can fashion it for them. We're just trying to figure out exactly what it is, and they can have to work that out by the next time we come for a meeting. But I don't wanna wait too long.
So you want it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Right, on this, records retention, Nick and I are taking a field trip, I think, June 4th, right to Akron?
Yes.
Have to take a, was it three-hour class, four-hour class?
I think it's a three or four-hour. Public records.
I'm sure that's gonna be just the audit.
The baseball game, yeah?
I hope so. Taking a cruiser. I don't know. Let it happen. All right. All right, 7:30, please stand for the district. Fledgely to the flag of the United States of America, and give the public, for which stands my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the members. Mr. Penn. Mr. Donovan. Here. Attorney Limer. Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Cernick.
Here.
Mrs. Yadd.
Here.
For President, way of course. Did you say who's coming? Did you say who's here?
I'm gonna make the exception, Bob Wimmer from the council, because we've been submitted a notice that he'll be out of town.
Second. All in favor? You realize it's been a while, correct?
Would you be able to talk about it? Well, yeah, I don't know. I could make a motion to excuse.
But that's, wait.
Let's wait. Do you think he'd be here?
All right, okay, we'll come back to that. Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting. Motion for reading approved. Second. Call in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. And notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media. Looper.
And we met tonight, so I'll announce the next meeting.
Okay, finance?
Not right now.
Legislation. Please.
Our next meeting will be held first Tuesday of the month at 6:30 in June, which is June 3rd.
Streets.
Before, months from now. We met tonight.
Boards, ARB.
First Thursday of the month, 7:00 p.m. here at Village Hall.
Planning?
Actually, tomorrow, the 21st, at 7:00, and there is business on the agenda. Board of Zouzakka won't be here, so it's not gonna, it'll all work, and, yeah, I'll talk tomorrow.
Okay, I have them on, talk tomorrow. I'll call them. Boards of appeals. West Reserve Fire District.
We will meet on Wednesday, June 11th, at 7:30 p.m. at the fire station on 170.
Boards for?
The 4th Tuesday. Fourth Tuesday. At 7:30, here.
And I'm the Warren. We changed it, yeah. We were supposed to meet tomorrow, changed it to the 29th at 3:00, here. What was it again? The 29th, here, at 3:00. All right, report from Mayor, we don't have any credit card stuff, so fiscal officer.
I'm circulating around that this bill to be paid. The April, the bank reconciliation is completed and all reconciled, and in front of you, you have the April financial, and everything's still looking good. Pretend to read.
Question? Anything over the percentage that should be, everything is still in line?
Everything is still in line.
Who's the auditor?
For the poll.
Yeah. And the plan's still working. I don't have it exact.
Washington, two of the second, next report.
Second. All in favor? All right. First. Our report from Deputy Clerk.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is on June 17th, I got summoned to the Columbia County Emergency Management Agency to be part of a nuclear emergency drill. I have a letter from Lou Veeble, the director, asking if you'd excuse me from the meeting.
Okay, report from Zoni Administrator, Mr. Spahn.
Okay, as Bill had mentioned, we do have a planning commission meeting. Okay, um, as Bill had mentioned, we do have a planning commission meeting. Uh, we will be discussing a non-controversial replat on Delaware Avenue. Should go through very smoothly. Um, I have also been attending to complaints for various grass, uh, junk cars, and disrepair throughout the village. I've been gaining, um, compliance through the carrot and the stick, and I also had a request for information on the, uh, the last time that a conditional use permit was granted for a duplex in R1. So, that's something that we've got to work on, that I will be working on. So, I was told that it was within the last fifteen years, so I've got some place to start looking.
You don't have to get a document if the document is available. You don't have to create a document, and you don't have to...
You don't have to format it any other way than you already have?
Right. So, in good faith, look for the document, but you don't have to climb Mount Everest to find it.
Okay, thank you.
There it is. I want to excuse you. I have to wait a minute, we have to start it.
I do it for him.
Dave, how about, uh, old, uh, Land Highs? Anything, anything to put in?
The narrative has been submitted to the prosecutor, uh, and it's, it's in the prosecutor's hands. It, he's being charged with the general offense code, it is not a zoning violation. So, he's committed a crime.
Say that again.
How far do we know? Do we know if the prosecutor, if the charges were imminent, or do we need anything more from us to provide confirmation?
I do not know that they are imminent, but I have not been asked for more permission.
I think what we can do, Mr. Major, is I'll call, um, Attorney Liam tomorrow, and find out the status of what he's dealing with. It would be my hope, and my understanding, that he would be preparing or getting ready to file a charge. We left it with, he had everything that Dave had done investigative wise, and he had the statute or the ordinance, and it was our understanding, I think Dave's and mine, he was going to charge him.
Okay, who's, who's this?
Attorney Liam.
Yeah, but who is he worth for?
Struthers. He is, he is the prosecutor.
In Landos Court?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and he is the criminal prosecutor for Pollen Village. We don't really, we don't have one. So, it was our understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that he had the facts, he had the law, and he was going to charge. I can't say that that's been done, but I can check on that. We'll come out.
Good, good. Because you said the docket is probably full, and nothing will happen in the summertime?
Well, the docket is, is slow. I don't know about full, I do know that, they only have court Monday, like, and Friday mornings, and they have a small plain magistrate, who used to be me, at my spot, and, um, they schedule civil hearings and civil matters on that docket as well. From what I've understood, it's been about two to three months to hear a criminal case for a first or second pre-trial, and then to reset is another three or four months. So, once you file it, then you're still looking at six months before you really do anything substantial, I believe. Now, well, I don't want to speculate. I'll find out what's going on.
Okay, please, okay, okay, with you.
I'll call it on tomorrow.
Thank you.
Dave, I had a little call yesterday, the day before, about an issue on Edgewater.
Seventy-four Edgewater? I, I actually contacted, oh, I actually contacted the, uh, Mahoney County Board of Health, uh, discussed the pool situation. I was, I actually talked to them on, uh, May fifth, so we're going, this, this is not the first time I'm hearing about it from you. And I was told to give them time until after Memorial Day to open up the pool and get it into working condition. In other words, there are plenty of pools, if you look in people's backyards, that are not in operable condition as of today. They're saying that after Memorial Day is generally when people get their pools into working condition. So, that, that was the directive that I was given. I was then also told, actually, uh, I think it was yesterday, uh, that the grass is very high also. So, that was a secondary complaint that I'll be pursuing. I have not pursued that one yet.
Is the house vacant?
No, it is not. It's a repeat offender.
So, why would they have to have their pool opened by Memorial Day?
Uh, no, let me, let me rephrase that. Maybe I'm not saying correctly. In working, in operable condition. There are big issues. So, you could, you could complain and say that it is a, it's, it's not in working order, it is a cesspool, it is this, it is that. But what the Mahoney County Board of Health is saying is that there are plenty of situations like that around the county, and to give them till after Memorial Day before, we call back and request an, an investigation from them, because they are the ones who inspect swimming pools.
Is that it? Make a motion to accept a zoning unit, this is a great report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from solicitor. That's all I have. I have to start. Uh, report from Chief of Police and Street Commissioner.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from engineer.
Nothing. Well, I did, I did mention last time, they're working on the sidewalk on one seventy. They started on that, and they're working on the roundabout, had statues and statues. They're working on that, too. But I don't know anything about the new, uh, stone, I mean, uh, sanitary sewer in the woods. I haven't seen any action. Okay, I'll keep you informed on that.
Okay, reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
Um, I think you're sick of us about that now. Okay, so, at the next meeting, we'll be doing our, um, second on the tax renewal, and our second on the permissive tax. We pretty much have covered my shopping list that I have set up for, um, finance committee. We have, um, hospitalization still, as something that will come due towards the end of the year, and we'll need to start prep for that probably in fall.
Motion to approve the report? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, legislative policy?
Nothing.
Police and fire?
Nothing.
Street sidewalks and drains?
Nothing.
Looper?
Uh, yeah, we've been at, we've been at tonight, um, I reviewed my meeting with Vicki electric today. Vicki has, uh, done the work on the bridge, her power out there for parade. Talked to them about the outside, uh, electrical service over here, uh, they're going to make repairs from the, uh, code violations that were found from last year's inspection, and those actually turned out to be pretty minor. There was one, there is a major problem, though, that, uh, from the original installation several years ago, uh, that the conduit wasn't deep enough. So, the choice was either pull it all out, put it deeper, or not, over, over the top of it, and, uh, that's what we chose to do. And then we'll do some inspections when that's completed, and that'll be much less expensive. The gardeners, uh, club was here also, and they got an estimate on work, they had electricity over the pergola, and, uh, also, they're going to repair the Christmas tree. We discussed the issue where there's, uh, where the gardeners want water over the pergola. Rust is going to do the work, um, but he's just so, so busy, uh, we decided that we're going to have somebody come in and, uh, I'm going to give an estimate tomorrow. Uh, we talked about the, um, the website that Dave Smith suggested a few weeks ago, and we've talked about this for years, uh, had a brief discussion about it, and Jeff is going to do some investigation on that, and make a presentation on our next meeting.
Any report?
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, report from boards, planning commission?
Nothing.
Board of Zonables?
Nothing.
Architecture review board?
Nothing.
I have a question on ARB. Um, I think, and I want to be sure I understood this, or I'm remembering it correctly, but I had passed out this sheet that first energy quarter about the trees. Did you say that this should go to the ARB to determine whether this should be, um, attached to the actual application for tree removal? Is that what council wanted to do with this?
Actually, planning commission is going to be looking into, um, changing our ordinances on trees, and, um, recommendations for species and so forth is going to be part of the, will probably be part of the, like, the new legislation.
Under planning commission?
Under planning commission. It's going to be, it's under the zoning code.
Okay, and doesn't, does, right now, our, um, tree commissioner fall under ARB? Is that the way that it's going to set up?
Yes.
So, is that going to change, too?
No.
No?
No.
That's the way it is.
Tree commissioner really is a service. They're serviced primarily to the ARB, which is written in the ordinance, but he's actually serviced to, to the, uh, in general. Uh, he's, he's going to be involved, he's going to be involved with the, uh, other planning commissions, uh, average about the trees as well.
So, there won't be a tree committee that makes the determination about removing trees or go to planning commission?
No, no, the new legislation will be written by, by the planning commission.
Okay.
But, but ultimately, that's, that's a zoning issue, and the tree commissioner's responsibility on, on day-to-day duties, and, and, uh, you know, it's going to depend on how the, how the legislation's written, too.
Okay. So, I guess my question that comes back to, do you want this attached to the application? Because it's a recommendation from the people who take these trees down, what we should be putting up in the first place, and especially the height, as concerned, you know, with the lines.
We could do that as a suggestion, but it, but it's, there's nothing compelling anybody to do that right now.
True, but do you think, Anthony, that if, this was on the backside of our application, um, that it helps the village in some respect, as far as people being upset about the height of trees that are interfering with lines, that we have shown that they've seen this? You know, and this is what, um, the electric company is saying is important, as far as the lines are concerned, the power lines.
Those are great suggestions. Again, there's nothing compelling anybody to, to, to follow that, though, right now, because there's nothing, there's nothing, there's no ordinance requiring it. So, yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Are we talking about the ordinance to require them to do, what are we thinking about?
Um, this is for tree removal in the next application, or is this for tree planting?
Tree planting.
They have to get permission to plant.
About removal and planting.
Right, right now, the, and I'm not that familiar with the tree ordinance, but, uh...
Oh, I know, it did sign up, I know.
But, but you do have, you do have to come and get permission to plant the street tree.
Yes.
Okay, because there's nothing in the ordinances about species.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so, this is where that would belong, in the planting permission.
Yes, yes.
And who, who decides that?
Well, the tree commissioner decides if they can plant the tree, and, and he's very knowledgeable, one of those, any of us, and I think, and I think he was, learned a little bit about it from when he came in that day. He knew a lot already about what trees might grow, and how, how that goes, but, but if he could cover that with whoever is applying, and I think to hand that out to people that are wanting to plant, no one applies to plant a tree, by the way. I don't know that we had too many people do that, and technically, because I've been reading it as pertaining to other things that have been going on with trees, every day that you plant a tree and it's there, it's a violation punishable by a fine, every day. And, and I think there are people all over the village who, right now, are subject to a lot of money and fines for not having gotten permission to plant the tree, and we'd have to prove that what he did and what's in tree there before, but I think the first thing to do would be to inform the public that there is a requirement to plant trees, you know, that you need to get permission of the tree commissioner. And then secondly, educate them on why they, it would behoove them to plant certain types of trees, because as we have happened here on, on one seventy, these great trees that were planted five years ago, maybe less, that, um, um, street skates paid for in part, in principle.
And, and the village.
And the village are going to have to be, you know, cut, cut down, because they're the wrong kind. No one knew that at the time, when, when they bought them, but, you know, they're going to get in the power lines, and we have to cut them. So, part of it would be, that's a great thing to pass out whenever they want to apply for planting a tree, but we first got to, I think, educate them, you've got to apply to plant a tree.
And like, like I said, planning commission is going to be taking this on as far as new legislation, uh, for the zoning requirements for planting of trees, and in that is going to be the type of species as recommended there, Ohio Edison, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and also, they're going to be working on, on a, a plan for street trees. Fundraising for street skates is going to be involved. This is, this is going to grow into something, um, quite large, and it's, it's just beginning.
Okay.
I think that is a good idea, but to hand that out, if somebody comes in for, if that ever happens.
No, I guess, yeah, I mean, that's our big goal right now, then, is to make people understand that they have to get permission to plant a tree in that space, and what type of tree they're putting there. So, how do we do this? Through the news media? Our mayor has to make a, uh, public address about it.
Make a phone call.
I think we had one within the past two months.
Did we?
Because Nick ended up with it, we didn't know who to give it to, and, uh, do the discussions, I think.
Yeah.
We knew that Mr. Brink.
Yeah, also there was.
Where's getting that?
Slowly.
Thank you.
Report, Jeremy.
Was that right?
Uh, I've heard the ARB report, I guess.
Is that ARB or something?
That was ARB.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Forest Board? High Memorial. And Western Reserve, we got anything?
No.
And Western Reserve Fire District?
Nothing.
Okay, report from special committees? Communications from residents? Any new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
All the ordinance. Mr. Brink, first ordinance. The first ordinance is an, an ordinance repealing chapter four forty-four of the Pollen codified ordinances relating to the use of bicycles in the village of Pollen and declaring an emergency. We would need a motion to waive the pre-readings.
Okay, make a motion to waive the pre-readings on said ordinance. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan?
Yes.
Mrs. Yadd?
Yes.
Now, we would need a motion to adopt a legislation.
Motion to adopt an ordinance repealing chapter four forty-four of the Pollen codified ordinances relating to the use of bicycles in the village of Pollen and declaring an emergency.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan?
Yes.
Mrs. Yadd?
Yes.
Side zero, let's go to the back.
Thank you, Mr. Kryasik, for all your work, too, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Back here, he is to the back side of the room.
I can't, everything else is a, is a readings, correct?
Well, the person, the person you bring forward, you bring forward. Five dollar commission tax next.
Which one?
Five dollar commission.
So, we're not going to have to order it, it's on here, okay. Okay, a motion for a first reading on an ordinance to levy a motor vehicle license tax in the amount of five dollars, to be in compliance with the Highway Vice Code, section forty-five oh four point one seven two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Captain. An ordinance extending the current agreement at which Aqua, Ohio Incorporated, should furnish water to the villages of Pollen and its inhabitants thereof, for the duration of the term commenced January first, twenty fifteen, and extending to December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. First reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, three point two renewed. Renewal, three point two.
Motion for a first reading of a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation, and this would be for three point two renewal, general fund.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think we need a motion. Okay, a motion to renew insurance policies with selective insurance and Scottsdale indemnity for a total of twenty thousand one ninety-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second and third readings.
Third reading, a motion for an ordinance establishing record retention schedule pursuant to Highway Vice Code, section one forty-nine thirty-nine, for the village of Poland, county of Mahoney, State of Ohio.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, presentation of bills.
Make a motion that the bills could pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media? All right, we're watched by council.
I have any?
Chris? Okay, Mark?
Sorry I was late. We forgive you.
Can we acknowledge that he did?
Yep, we never excuse him, no. Seven thirty-five, we're only running. Phil?
Just again, thanks to Frank Frigowski for his work on getting us in line with the Highway Vice Code.
Where's Frank? God, I'm seeing him. Stand up, Frank, oh, okay, stand up. Everybody knows Frank.
Thanks for taking care of him. Joe?
Jeff, hey, you're doing a good job taking over for your dad.
Thanks.
Yeah, and you're writing good minutes, too.
Chris?
I'd like to make a motion going to executive session for pending litigation.
Second. Rule call?
Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan?
Yes.
Mrs. Yadd?
Yes.
Seven fifty-seven.
Seven fifty-seven.
All right, that's pretty good.